All right, we'll bring the Monday, August 22nd, meeting of the Berlin School Committee to order. We're in the process of approving the payroll and the payable warrants. And the consent agenda includes the June 2nd open session meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Sure.
Second. Okay. Anybody have any changes? Okay. Then we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. We had a communication from the Berlin Board of Selectmen. And that was, let's see, where did I put it? Oh, here it is.
Just to vote, now chairman, just to let them know, let you know, that the reorganization of their committee for the current operating year, Thomas Andrews Chairman, Val Bradley's Vice Chairman, and Judith Blumen is clerk.
Okay.
So courtesy communication from the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Thank you. I don't believe there's any petitions in audiences relating to items on the agenda. So we'll move on to the superintendent's report, but first I'd like to introduce Michael DeBruel, who is our new superintendent, and also Courtney Keegan, who is our finance director that was hired over the summer. A little bit of audience. And I'll turn it over to you.
It's great to be here. First official meeting. We've been to a number of them already, but it was great to be here this evening. And we've been very busy this summer. We have all, everyone that's out there, we have, the bus routes are all set for today, and they should be all published, so you can go on the websites for the local schools to find out about the bus routes. We have a new way of doing it this year. We have not changed any bus routes. But we also have the ability this year to identify students that are at bus stops, which we could not do in the past, which is nice, just in case, God forbid, we misplace or somebody misplaces a student somewhere, we can locate who they are. So that's another big add-on force for this year. We're very, very happy about that. And I know Ms. Keegan here has been working very diligently in terms of not only just helping to close out the books for Berlin, Boyleson, and the region, but also to verify a budget for this coming year, and to verify indeed the monies that we have and the funds we have to operate, so we go operate in confidence, okay, in keeping the budget forward, and of course, keeping us in the black. That's your number one job, is to keep the superintendent out of trouble, and the school committee when it comes to finances. So very happy to have Courtney on, boy, things have gone very well. Opening day activities this year, August 26th, we have a new staff orientation, which will take place at the Hanzo Regional High School. All new staff, nine to twelve. I'll be there to welcome new people, and also the business office will come down to explain things such as how health insurance, if they have any questions on that, and personal days and conference days, and get them signed up for email, get them signed up on our call list for snow days, even though this is August, and other emergencies that could arise. So that should be a wonderful meeting to get them acclimated to the Berlin and Boyleson Public Schools. On Monday, August 29th, we have our professional development for teachers. That will take place at Hanzo. We have Dr. Elizabeth Englander coming in, well-renowned lecturer on bullying, mandated anti-bullying programs required by the Commonwealth. That will be from 8:30 to 11:30. We'll have that program available. School committee is welcome, as I sent through all emails, if you'd like to attend, other interested parties also, as long as we know they're coming, so we can plan for people. And then we'll have individual building activities, you know, following after lunch for the rest of the day, for each individual building within the district, or districts, shall I say. And on Tuesday, August 30th, we have our Welcome Back Breakfast at Boyleson Elementary School for all employees in the district from 8:00 to 8:30, opening day remarks from 8:30 to 9:30, update faculty, all faculties, not just the faculty, cafeteria people, school bus drivers, custodians, all welcome to come on the introduction for the introduction of new staff, and of course, the opening of the 2011-12 school year. So very, very excited about that. Then we have some other in-service that will go on during the course of the day. One of them, we'll have another mandated anti-bullying in-service for all of our paraprofessionals, cafeteria, custodial, secretarial staff at Boyleson Elementary, which is also required. And then we'll have individual building activities with teaching staff for the rest of the day. And then Wednesday, August 31st, we welcome students back to the first day of school. Should be a very, very exciting year. As you can see, if you drive down Route 70, the new high school, middle high school is going up. Concrete is pretty much all, all been poured for the foundations and the flooring, and of course, as you can see, steel is erupting, is going up as we speak, and obviously, this is going to take place at a pretty quick pace from now on. People actually see a building emerging from the ground, because 75% of all school building happens to do with site preparation and ground preparation. So people sometimes see the vehicles out there, and it's like, well, what's happening? It's been two months, I don't see anything happening. So that site preparation, once all that is, takes place, and things go very, very quickly from there. So we've been working with the school building committee, introduced them to Courtney last week, of course, as you know, Courtney is certified as a CFO, was signing off on those procedures, has experience in school building activities. So it's a great addition for the school building committee, but that's also going along and proceeding quite, quite well. So we're excited. It's going to be a great, great school year.
Great. How do we need to let know if we're going to attend the bullying program on Monday?
Just to call myself, Cheryl Nelson, and we'll just, we'll just let you.
Okay, I'm going to try to make it.
Okay. Fantastic.
Yeah, I would urge, you know, even at the regional, probably mention it.
And you're welcome to attend our opening day breakfast. If you'd like to swing by and just say hello, and participate at any level you want, if you'd like, if you'd like to speak, we'd love to know.
Okay. Thank you. Carol, the principal's report?
Sure. The only report I have, well, actually, first I'm going to start by saying that everything is moving right along at school. The custodial staff is at their way ahead schedule, which is great to hear. We do have our folks coming in to do the landscaping work Thursday and Friday this week, which I'm overjoyed about. I really, I've started pulling weeds out of the sidewalk myself, so, but, but we do have that, and things are good. We're in good shape over there for the start of school, so, except for a couple little things, and one is the kindergarten, and what we're here to request for tonight. I wanted to start by saying that when we, when the school committee approved the full day free kindergarten program in the spring, we were ecstatic, and so were apparently a lot of people in the community and other communities, because we have 18 students in each class, five of which are the school choice children. So, yeah, we're very happy. It's a nice full class sizes. And then we also have, within that, there are about three families that are still interested in doing half-day situation, where they would have their child come out that half-day. So that's, that's a really good thing. However, in June, when I realized we would have 18 students in each classroom and one kindergarten aide, I realized that we need another kindergarten aide. But because of the circumstances, I really couldn't discuss that with anyone at that moment until, until August, when we sat down and had a chance to do that. So my proposal is, we have currently in the kindergarten revolving fund, $13,789.55. I'd like to be able to apply that to a new position for a kindergarten paraprofessional full-time, and then possibly use additional funding from the school choice. We had originally looked at a starting salary of a step-one para at $17,969, but I also want to have a kind of, a little bit of wiggle room, that if we have somebody who may have more experience, I'd hate to lose that person, and we could possibly put that out a little bit more and offer a little bit more to that person. So I'm kind of looking at a range of funding for that position, if we possibly do that. So my request tonight is to see if we can utilize that funding for that position, and also if we could use some of the school choice money in addition to that.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Carol?
Just an add-on to that. I believe that according to the certification standards, that you have to have that aide in there once you cross that 12-to-1 student barrier.
Right. Any, any, I see.
Yes, mandated by law.
We did also consult the Director of Financial Services, Ms. Keegan on this, just to chat a little bit about the kindergarten revolving fund. As you know, those were tuitions that were designated, you know, by former administrations in the school committee to be collected for kindergarten tuition, so it seemed to be very apropos. That, that is the source that we would, we would tap for the majority of this funding. And I think you want to do that anyhow, just to wind up that account, and get it off your ledger at this point in time. So we feel that is the appropriate account, obviously, to, to, to use for this particular expenditure, and the, and then whatever's left would come out of school choice, and we have ample funding and aid to take care of that for this year.
And certainly, if I may add, and there's a direct correlation to the fact that there are five, five of those students are school choice students also. So that's kind of a nice fit there, too. So, and there certainly is plenty of money in the, out.
Okay. So is, is the, it would not exceed $17,969?
What we're asking is to have the kind of flexibility to be able to extend that over that $17,000.
Okay.
Initially, when I looked at it, I was saying, well, let's try to go with the lowest step we possibly could for a para, that, that starting salary. But I do have a possibility, some interest from internal staff that may like to move into that, that do have experience, and I kind of want to be able to have that option to, to choose them, depending on who we get for, because we've done the anticipated posting, looking at everybody that we have, and doing some interviews, to possibly move somebody in that position internally. Or if they come from the outside, too, and have some experience, to just be able to get that in place.
I think we're looking, well, through the chair, to the committee, as long as approval of the positions, which is under the domain of the, of the school committee to approve these positions. They do not currently exist on the budget. Well, they do, they do, these are, anyhow, in this structure and in this format, they do not. So that's, you know, number one.
Okay.
And then, two, the designated subcategories about where we would, those accounts that the money would come from, one being the revolving account, and that figure is pretty much set in stone, what you have in front of you. And the school choice fund, that's a target, a target area, but we want commission, if possible, to go beyond that, I mean, not astronomically beyond that, to go beyond it, given, depending on who we, who we hire.
Okay. So...
Is there a tap into the number that you're looking?
Not at this point.
Well, would you say, let's say, a range of two to 3,000 more? Is that a fair guess?
I think that's reasonable.
Reasonable?
I think that's reasonable.
Is that reasonable?
So if you were to hire within, might you hire a step-one person to replace that position? You know, the, the other one vacates?
Yes, so then, that's right, yeah, because that could potentially be the case where we have...
Hire should, could, could still be a step-one.
Right, the person that we would replace, if it was internally, could actually be even significantly less than the person currently in place, so...
Yeah.
I think it's given the timing, here, that we're old, in a week, I think it's, there are a lot of pressure to move us along.
But that's, yes, that's exactly right, so...
Okay.
Okay. Just obviously, you recommend?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Do you want to make a motion? Motion to approve the second kindergarten aide?
That's really the only motion I have to make, is to request for a full-time kindergarten, additional full-time kindergarten aide to come out of the school.
We don't need to say where the funding's coming?
And designate the administration that the funding to come out of the revolving account, and then, until there's no more money in that account, then we made to come out of school choice.
You got to get that in.
Not too dependent on you.
I'll be bold, and so I'll say so moved.
I'll second. Okay, anything else to be said? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else, Carol, or are you all set?
I know we wanted to set the time for your music to come to the school, so...
Right, right. You going to be sticking around?
Yes.
Okay, good.
That's further down the agenda.
Yeah, we'll get that. Okay. The next item on the agenda is to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Berlin Personnel Subcommittee and the Berlin Teachers Association. So it does take a vote of the school committee to do that. And do you want me to step out and see whether Val is available?
We actually, yes, we have to formally, we have formally invited for Val to be here this evening, so, yes, we actually, we have to wait for her to come to make the...
Was she going to come right down, or does she want somebody, do you think somebody, she's waiting down there?
Is there anything starting, is it seven?
Yeah, it starts at seven, but she may be here.
I can go down and see if you'd like, see if she's there or not, and we just could proceed with the rest of the agenda.
No, that wasn't her.
Okay.
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Okay. Sure, take a look, and then if not, we'll just continue on and come back to that.
I have a quick little question on this one. The date right here for the parent conferences, was that the, did it agree upon date with the...
No, we didn't have a specific date.
That's right, I didn't know today. We were trying to figure out the calendar, and we called Patty, and she didn't know what the date was either, so I said, well, let's do Wednesday the 2nd, because we, it's right kind of in the middle of the week, rather than breaking it up on Tuesday.
Right.
Can we...
I think if you just burn that up...
I didn't want to mess up anything, and I knew it was to be...
You know, I think so many times with this, I'm thinking, are they going to look at me and go, are you kidding? I don't think it matters. Really, well, Mike's got some knowledge of something.
I don't know, I haven't talked about this with him, so I don't want to cause a problem.
No, I don't think it would matter. I wasn't even aware of where it was in the calendar.
Right, because usually we have two days, Tuesday and Wednesday, and there were half days, so I don't know if somebody just picked, oh, let's do it on Tuesday. I don't know.
Something, yeah, maybe just Cheryl.
Maybe, right, she might have just done it, but is there, are you comfortable?
I don't think it'll be a problem.
I assume it's run through 06 Selectmen.
Yes, right.
No one said it yet.
No one said it, okay.
For a little while.
All right. Well, she'll probably just come down then, so we'll continue on. And then due to the agreement that we've come with, come to with the Berlin Teachers Association, then we will have to approve a revised school calendar. Shall we go ahead and do that next, or do you want to skip that also?
Well, you could vote that.
Okay.
No problem with that.
Okay. Go ahead and do that.
Well, as you can see, due to, well, due to the anticipated approval of the memorandum of agreement between the Berlin School Committee and the Berlin Teachers Association, that we will have to revise our, our calendar for next year. Revisions have nothing to do with the start of school, or any of this type of nature, so parents don't have to be concerned about the first few months of school. But basically, towards the, at the end of, of the school year, this will be a 185 staff days and 180 student days, of course, as mandated by the law. So we will be bringing our school calendar back, and, and it should be the last day released, as you can see, would be June 15th, should be the last, the last day of school, which should be an early release, of course, not counting how many snow days that we get during, during the course of the year, which we then add, add on from that. The major change is the November parent conferences. Remember, we had two half-days, and we're going to make that one full day. So November 2nd will be a full day of instruction for students and teachers. That's the major change in the calendar, isn't that something I assume parents would be, also be happy about?
Carol did have a question about the, which day it would be for the, for the conferences?
Right. Like, you know, while you're out, I clarified with Chris, I didn't know if that date, the Tuesday date and the first was set with, with the agreement with the Teachers Association. But I, I understand it was, it wasn't, I wanted to know if we can have it on the 2nd instead for teacher conferences. It's something we were actually talking about at school today, which they weren't sure themselves, the Teachers Association folks, which one day was set for them, in that discussion. So, and the reasoning, we're thinking the 2nd is because it was in the middle of the week, and rather than have the children come in on a Monday, and then Al would get on a Tuesday, that it would just be a midweek. I don't know if it would create an issue, but if we can switch it, it'd be good if it's a concern or an issue.
It's not an issue with me, it's, it's, it's a school calendar, that's a superintendent.
In this draft, it was on Tuesday, November 1st, the no-school day, which would be the parent conferences. Carol would like to change it to the 2nd.
Do you know, you're going to go back to February 1st?
It isn't a problem for me. No, I think it makes sense, yeah. Otherwise, the whole calendar would be the same.
Correct.
Right, right, so, that is...
Okay. I didn't see any problem with it. I think it makes sense.
So November 2nd will be parent conferences, and November 1st will be regular scheduled school day.
Right. All right.
Chris? Can you comment at this point at all on what were the changes in the agreement this year, other than Training Day?
I assume that there would be...
No, I think my advice, my suggestion would be to wait till you actually vote the memorandum of agreement.
Right.
And explain any changes to that, you know, as it comes out, and until, you know, Ms. Bradley comes to, to also vote with, with you.
Okay.
That would be my, my recommendation.
So do I hear a motion to approve the calendar as presented, but changing the parent conferences days to November 2nd, rather than the 1st? So moved?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 And we'll get that right up on the website.
And the next thing on the agenda was to appoint Superintendent DeBruel as the representative of the district to the board, to, to the Board of Aspete.
I think this has been, I believe it's been a traditional appointment in the past, that most school committees in the Aspete Valley Collaborative do appoint their superintendents to serve on the, on the board, the directors, representing you on those monthly meetings that occur, that's fairly, I think that's what's happened in the past, so...
We started, we started in, is it June? We pointed, we had not been doing it, but we should have been doing it.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Yes, true. Yes, you should appoint that every year. You should, you should have that every year, because it is required through their, their member, their agreement with all the collaborative members.
Yeah, so we, now that we have our new superintendent again, we are going to appoint Dr. DeBruel as the representative of the district to board, to the Board of Aspete, at the Aspete Valley Collaborative, I'm sorry. Do I hear a motion to that effect? So, second. Okay. Anything else to be said? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And the next thing on the agenda is to schedule a tour of Berlin Memorial School, which we do, or we try to do annually for the school committee, and anybody else, I guess, that would like to come. Is there a date that would be better than others?
Typically, what we've done in the past is have a break before school committee meeting on that evening. I'm not sure exactly what the September school committee meeting is.
I don't know for sure yet, do you?
We can do another date, but I know we have...
I think we'll be setting those on this coming Wednesday night, in conjunction with all, all the school committee dates of the year.
Okay. Why don't we, do you want to just plan to do that? I'll ask the members here.
Whatever the date is.
Whatever the date happens to be, we'll, we'll plan to come, say at 6:00 and meet. Is that going to work for you? That's fine. Okay. As long as I know in advance, I can schedule around it. Okay. All right, we'll just sort of plan to do that then, when the next meeting is. And the next thing is the Reed Tyler Scholarship application, and we put this on here, not necessarily to talk about the whole application, but to talk about the request that came from someone who did get the scholarship this year, and then was not able to keep the scholarship because the class that they had signed up for was canceled. So I don't know if there's anything else to do with that email, and sort of a decision, what should the school committee do in this case? I guess my suggestion would be to just have the applicant apply again. I don't think it would be an issue. I don't, I don't foresee that it would be a problem, that she would most likely get it again anyway. Do you guys have any comments or better suggestions?
The only thing that I would say is, we did, as a subcommittee, when we met, we talked about trying to make more of a significant scholarship next year, and not just take and basically divvy the money out between, in different increments. So that might have an effect.
If we decide to do that.
Yeah, and, you know, instead of doing $500, $300 scholarships, I believe the subcommittee felt that it would be more, more, I don't know if the right word, effective to give, like a $2,000 scholarship and less, to less people. Not everybody would get it. As we do it now, if you put in the application, you generally got something.
You generally expect to get something.
Right.
But, right.
Right. So that would be something that would obviously affect it.
That may affect it. Does anybody read over the actual wishes of the donor and all that?
The will, yeah, several times.
Yeah, when we revised it, we did go over it quite a lot. Does this have any type of impact? Is there any wording in there, too? I think that we should be cautious of...
I'm not aware of...
Do you have a copy of that? Do you have a copy of it recently?
I have a hard copy in here with me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either. I mean, I do have a copy of it also, unless it would, it may help enlighten for that type of question, but...
Well, coming that it came from the law firm, I don't think that she would have an issue with it. And the other thing, I don't think we have to, like, they tell us what we can spend. I don't think you have to spend it all.
Right.
You could, you could give a $1,000 scholarship and say, okay, roll the rest over, and it would come up the next year, if we want to read the will. When we, when we redid the application process, I think we pretty kind of went through that will, fine-tooth comb, with, with the law firm.
Right.
So I'm pretty comfortable with the application process, and it really doesn't say anything that has anything to do about rolling it over, you know, so I think it's up to purview of the school committee.
I wasn't here, I guess, when you guys went through that, so...
Yeah, a lot of it is, and, and, you know, it's in the direction of the school committee.
Right, and I think that, or the direction of the subcommittee, really, because...
Which makes for a range.
Right, but I feel like, that, I think that subcommittee has always had that prerogative, but hasn't chosen to do that.
Right, right. Well, back, back when we were really lazy, we just added up the number of kids and divided it.
Right, right, and that was the way it was handled for a long time, even before I got on the committee.
Right.
So do you, do you still, I still have it sort of in my notes, that we'll talk about the process in January.
Yes.
As far as the direction for that particular applicant, you know, I don't know.
How do you guys feel about it?
I...
The reason, I believe the reason that the class got canceled, there just wasn't enough interest in the class.
Right.
It wasn't like it was on any, it's not like the person withdrew, or changed, changed their mind.
I would have seen...
I would be in favor of kind of reserving the money to do that. Obviously, it would have to be, you know, somewhere along the lines that the class was, what she was looking to do. I don't know how you guys feel.
I really think she should get the money, since it was approved for this previous year.
Right.
However that would work, I'm not sure.
Well, maybe, if you want, I can contact, and see if the money can just sit there until next year.
And we would collect, I mean, I'm sure it's not a lot of money, so it's not a lot of interest and stuff, but in the endowment form, it'll stay in the endowment, and then we can...
At least the, right, the same money will still be there, hopefully.
And earmark, right.
That will be the...
Yes. Because it has been a little bit less each year because of the economy.
Correct.
Right.
But it wouldn't affect next year's, I don't believe it would, it wouldn't affect next year's amount.
That would be fine, if you want to check with Dorothy.
Okay, I can do that.
And then we can, maybe they can earmark just that particular amount of money. And then we can, maybe they can earmark just that particular amount of money, or something.
Okay, I will check with her. The other question I have around Reed Tyler, what is done with the original applications? Are they destroyed, or are they...
I think you would hold them for a certain period of time, until all has been distributed, and then...
Could the central office hold them?
Actually, there's a, there's a file cabinet here, that we can, if you have them at your house and you want to get rid of them, that would be the place, we could file them if you'd like, if they, unless they want to keep them at the central office.
And you may want to ask the attorney, are you going to talk to the attorney's office? You may want to ask them, because they may have some requirements on how long, that we're unaware of, too.
Well, I have an internal cabinet at this point, and I really don't need that many.
Right.
But, okay.
The original property.
Okay.
Federal accounting standard is usually seven years.
Seven years.
Seven years and a windback.
Right.
I just don't want to keep them myself.
I don't blame you. I know that there are some in that filing cabinet across the hall.
That probably could be destroyed.
That probably could be destroyed, correct.
Okay, okay.
They're in like notebooks and that kind of thing, so...
Okay.
Let me know, I've got a key if you are interested in...
Maybe next meeting, I'll bring them to the next meeting, and if you bring your key, we can...
Okay, I'll write it down.
That would be wonderful.
Okay. So I think that's, do we, once you get that answer, do you want to put together, like, something for the applicant?
Actually, it sounded like Dorothy from Boach and Dewey, Dewey was going to be that, communicate that.
Okay.
And do we vote this, or do we not vote this at all? It's just, I don't know.
We already voted, and she got, she had the money.
Right, okay, I just think because it is special circumstances, we ought to make that known, so...
Maybe Dorothy can let her know what the process is.
Okay.
For that money.
Do you think we need to vote to, be willing to allow her, is that appropriate?
Well, it's, my understanding is you're managing this trust, is that, is that correct?
Well, the attorney's office...
So you're just selecting the candidates, and then the personal money comes from the attorney's office?
Right.
Correct.
Okay, so you're just facilitating this?
Correct.
So, this is a change of venue so far?
Yeah.
We've never had this question before, so...
I think if you're going to earmark money out of those funds, and you're going to do that for next year, then you probably should have a formal vote to do so.
And I think in this vote, we need to include some type of language, a special circumstance was, not that she didn't choose to take the class when the money was made available, was that the class was canceled. So we don't have...
Hit it, Nikki.
You're on a roll, Nikki, go ahead.
No, I don't think I am.
What about you, Eileen? Did you get, did you make something?
I could.
Want to take a stab at it?
I'd have to be by myself in front of my computer.
I know, I know.
So we make a motion to defer the payment to the higher institution of learning, and under these special circumstances?
I think the money has already been returned to the attorney.
Okay.
So, maybe it would be to, if, if it is possible, after checking with Dorothy from Boach and Dewey, that we could earmark the amount of money given to that particular applicant, which I don't know if, if it's in the email? I don't think it is. But if, if it's possible legally, then we would earmark that amount of money for that particular applicant for next year.
Because...
Go ahead. This is a group effort.
Due to cancellation of the, of the class.
Right.
You're going to have your own reason if you want to, the motion is just...
I just kind of wanted that.
Right. Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so let us know.
Okay.
Well, I still don't see Val.
Do we walk down?
That would be wonderful.
Do you want her to come on down here and visit?
Yes, if she's, if she's available, that'd be great. She should be here. I would think.
You have to invite her.
Yeah.
And I'm sure she wants, she went to all the other meetings, so...
Yeah. Well, I'm sitting on these, we're, we're going to sign some of these.
They didn't like it.
The last person I were talking about that, the...
Yeah, there was a huge flock of them yesterday.
Yeah, they're big numbers.
Yeah.
Because they're, the way it was explained to me, they, they belong to us, they don't migrate, they live, so they just keep multiplying.
They do, they do.
Hey, Val.
I kept, I'll be reminding you.
Wasn't at the golf course.
We knew you'd be here. Okay, so, we're going to approve the memorandum of agreement that the Berlin Personnel Subcommittee and the Berlin Teachers Association came to, in order to have another two-year contract with the Berlin Teachers. And I don't know whether we need to go over this really afternoon, or...
Well, if everyone's prepared to read the contract, I would say there's no reason to have that review.
Right.
Most people have, have questions on it, make a motion, and then there's this discussion, that's going to be appropriate to discuss it, you know, if you want to discuss it.
I think all, the three of us are all set, I believe. And if Ruth doesn't have any questions, then I'll ask for a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Berlin School Committee and the Berlin Teachers Association. So moved?
Second.
Anything else to be said? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
That's it?
I think you did.
You're all set. Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Phil.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming to the meetings, that's one of the important things, you get to the meetings.
All right. So I guess we are down to the public school committee comments, and the public is very silent, very silent.
The first time there's been nobody in the audience.
I think it's still summer, I think they're still enjoying summer, I guess. School committee, you have any comments, questions? Okay.
It's still summer.
I know it is. Future agenda items, I think Mike and I have talked about a few things that'll be on the, probably the September, or on upcoming meetings. We'll get a five, an FY-12 budget report, and you were going to talk about the outstanding warrant articles.
Yes.
At some point, after the region approves the mentor and mentor program coordinator job descriptions, they will come to the Berlin School Committee. The next month, I think we will be having new staff members, if there are any, come to the meeting to, to meet the school committee. And I think the only other thing I can think about, think, thought of was the, at some point, the MCAS, we'll have an MCAS report.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, and also, Chris, I wanted to add on to that of school improvement plan, to approve that for this year.
Okay.
Also, falls in the fall.
Sometime in the fall, or in September?
I guess whatever you would prefer for the agenda.
Well, we can't put this all on one night, because...
Right, right. But I just want to mention it, because we had, we had in the fall...
Yeah, we have been doing it in the fall.
October, but we can certainly do it, it's, we could do it in September, but October, maybe that would be...
Perhaps the chair and I could sit down prior to the next meeting, go over these, the items that you're listing for tonight, and just get more definitive, exactly what we'll present. I mean, obviously FY-12 report, you know, Ms. Keegan, where the, where the budget is in September, I think would, would be of paramount importance to know where we are fiscally, and I think we're fine, but, but just to know the exact numbers are at that point in time.
Sure.
We should also have an idea on the outstanding warrant articles, that the town has given us, one for computer upgrades and software, one for the HVAC systems at the, at the elementary school, we should probably be, be prepared with that, and a mentor job description, too.
Yeah, that will come at some point.
And new staff members, of course, you know, probably can have them come in, so that's not an issue. The MCAS and the school improvement plan.
Right.
The MCAS, we, we have some notification from, from the State Department of Education right now on, on the results of those, so we want some time to actually prepare a very comprehensive report for you, and also our, and improve, what our improvement plan is for those MCAS scores. So that, that may spill over into October, but if you'd like, I can certainly sit down with the chair and discuss those items beforehand, and then we have a definitive list, you know, for you on what we will exactly present that evening, and hope to accomplish, and also, then we could go for the October meeting, for diversity on...
Right, right, I just figured, if not on September, they'd be in October or, or at some point, so... Okay.